Good evening. Welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Justin to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
I have to face the parent and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I have the agenda submitted.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Any statements or remarks from citizens for anything not on tonight's agenda? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? Our next item will be to approve the minutes from August 5th and August 26th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Next item is to call variance request P-25-0135. This is Richard Grayson. It's to reduce the minimum required lot width on 3.2483 acres at 1021 Moreland Way and Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P-25-0135, Richard Grayson, applicant owner. This is parcel B-06030A. Currently zoned R2 in the community village character area. And the request is a special exception variance from UDC Article 4, Section 40801 and Table 4.1 to reduce the required minimum lot width from 150 feet to 100 feet. This is the concept plan you have in your application packet, slightly larger version. Architectural renderings remain the same from the rezon. Staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Justin Greer, Pittman Greer Engineering. This is a project that you guys saw back in June of last year. After we got the rezoning approved, we had the property, because it was in two different surveys, had the boundary rerun. And we went with tradition surveying because Mr. Ben had done that survey originally. And it came back that, so when Stephen ran the boundary, they ended up, this pin is the actual property line and not the corner. So it made this line here, instead of going to that point, go to that point. And it's a rare mistake that Mr. Ben made, surprisingly. We see very little that we get from Mr. Ben, those old surveys that he did where there was an error. And so what that did was that created a real problem for us on usable lot area. You may or may not know if, in O'Conne County, the Northeast Georgia District Health Board has set that lot sizes have 25,500 square feet of good dirt. If it's a duplex or any kind of multifamily building, you're required to have that per side of the duplex. So whatever number of units you have, you have to have that. So it doesn't matter if it's a four-bedroom duplex or a five-bedroom duplex. You've got to have double the amount, so 51,000. Because we lost that area, we were really tight to begin with. We had to go to the Northeast Georgia Health Board and get a variance on the actual lot size, what their requirement would be. We got that, that was favorable for us to get that variance from them. And so now, to do that, to get to those sizes, we had to make this lot here be, meet their requirements of 100 feet width. And so it's kind of a little bit of discrepancy in what they will allow, what the county code will allow. So county code requires 150 feet, which we can meet on this lot, but we can't, we were unable to do it based on the soil's requirement for the health department. If we were able to do 25.5 for the duplex, I can make it work no problem, but I can't meet both requirements. So that's why we're here before you tonight with the variance request. It's nothing that Mr. Rick did. It wasn't intentional. If we'd known it from the beginning, we may have gone, may would have gone a different route on his zoning. But that's just something that Stephen found, that error. So that's why we're here before you tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance request? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? Then we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve variance P-25-0135. Richard Grayson reduced the minimum required lot width 3.2483 acres, 1021 Moreland Way and Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Second.
Motion second, in discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is to discuss and consider postponement of rezon request P-25-0043 and also special use P-25-044.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff is recommending for your consideration this evening the postponement of rezon P-25-0043 and special use P-25-0044 until the October 20th Planning Commission to allow time for review of certain UDC code sections that have transportation improvement requirements that may not have necessarily contemplated state and US route intersections at the time of adoption. So the action before you again this evening is approval of the postponement. Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to postpone as recommended.
Motion and a second to postpone rezon request P-25-0043 as well as special use request P-25-0044. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Next item is to discuss and consider a budget amendment for right-of-way acquisition of State Route 53 and Race Church Road and Malcolm Bridge Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The right of, we have reached agreement with the affected property owners for the Race Church, State Route 53 roundabout. There's an aggregate of six parcels affected by this. You know, we have it budgeted and we will need $1,429,755 from that budget transfer so that Mr. Hager can complete the closings of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from commissioners? Do we have any public comment? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the budget of the right-of-way condition for SR 53 to race church.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Next item is to consider appointments to the O'Conne County Recreation and Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following for appointments to the Recreation Advisory Committee with appointments beginning October 1st of this year expiring September 30th of 2027. I'd like to put forth the name of Wesley Hunzinger, Jason Hugh, Joe Avalo, Robin Stevens. These four are currently on the board. And then I'd like to add Travis Stevens as well.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Now we'll consider appointments to O'Conne County Planning Commission.
I'd like to appoint Robin, Robert Timon and Christopher Harry.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Here none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent items, submit.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. We do have many executive sessions discussed land acquisition and litigation.
Make a motion for, to that effect.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Wish to go back in regular session?
So move.
All in favor?
Uh huh.
Uh oh.
Oh, we can't.
What we gonna do?
Oh, Mark.
We need a motion to go adjourn, I guess.
So move.
We are adjourned, thank you.